Great, so we'll call the regular meeting of Township Council for November 17th to order. And of course, I'd like to begin by acknowledging the traditional territories of the Kosh Salas peoples, and in particular, acknowledge our valued relationships with the Kaitse, Kwantlin, Matzqui, and Semiamu First Nations. Before we get started, Councillor Whitmarsh did request, I think it was 10 days ago, to say a few words. Councillor Whitmarsh, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak, Your Worship. I just wanted to thank all the residents in the Township of Langley for their support, for getting out to vote, and making the effort to do that on the by-election day. I also wanted to make sure that we, I thanked every person that put their name forward to run in the by-election. It's a difficult thing to do, and it's hard to step out in the public and to be, to do that. And so, I appreciate and thank every person that did do that. Of course, getting elected is not just the efforts of one person, it's the efforts of a whole team of people. And so, my family, my close friends, and other people and associates that spent a lot of time and effort to ensure that we had a strong team to run in the election. So, it's important that those people are acknowledged, and I thank them for all of their work. I've lived in Langley for, Langley Township, 24 years, and I'm excited to be back on council. I was on council for eight years, as many of you know, and I love this community. Raised my children here, and now my grandchildren. And so, I want to see this community continue to thrive and grow, and I'm excited to be part of this council again. Looking forward to working with every member of council as we strive to make Langley the best community that we possibly can. It is important to me that we strive to continue to grow and move forward, but have balanced and thoughtful growth as we move ahead. Fiscal responsibility and affordability is important as we find that the cost of living is getting higher and higher as we go. And also, ensuring that we have a strong community, not just in Langley, but with our neighbors, with local municipalities around us, but also not-for-profit groups, our school board, and other kinds of groups that really contribute to this community. So, thank you for that. And also, to the staff, the last few weeks have been incredibly helpful in getting me acclimatized to the, back to the new role. Even though it's only been three years, a lot has changed in three years. And so, it's nice to have such great staff to be able to bring me along and help me through the process. So, Your Worship, thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for the opportunity to be here with the council, and look forward to a good rest of the year. Thank you.
Yeah, and congratulations. And congratulations to everybody who ran the by-election. Everyone will have another crack at it in less than a year. So, certainly looking, looking forward to our last budget, and a number of initiatives to wrap up, and starting a few new things for the next council here before the end of this term. And I'm glad to have a full council again, and again, congratulations on your return to council.
Thank you.
And anybody else with any other comments can certainly, can raise it under other business or council report. So, with that, get a motion to adopt the regular me, agenda for November 17th. Moved by Councillor Ferguson, seconded by Councillor Rint. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I wish to withdraw under item Q F.1.
Do you wish to make an amendment to remove that from the agenda?
I don't think I need to. It's a notice motion that I made, I should be able to withdraw it.
Dear Worship, to Councillor Richter, you are amending the agenda, that would require a resolution.
Okay, then I make a motion to remove under item Q F.1.
Seconded by Councillor Coates. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Seeing none, call the question on that amendment. It's defeated, Councillor Bailey, Councillor Ferguson, Councillor Pratt, Councillor Rint. Miss Power, can you bring that back up? Just want to make sure that was 5-4. Yes, and Mayor Wood were in opposed, so that's defeated. Is there any other discussion on the agenda?
Yep.
Go ahead, Councillor Richter. I'm not sure why the system is turning your mic off, but go ahead.
Okay, with regards to item M1 on page 12 of our agenda, I note that what is on the agenda says that M1, which is coming forward from closed, carried unanimously, and I'm curious how that's possible when I was absent.
Miss Power?
In the case of a councillor, when a council member is absent, we don't note it in the vote. So, in this case, you were absent, but you were absent prior to that. So, it just shows as unanimously as there was no votes against.
Okay, well, I do believe the word unanimous is incorrect, so I'd like to amend page 12 of the agenda to just read carried. And I'll make that motion.
Yep, Miss Power, is, I think you're following some sort of convention or council procedure practice? Like, it was unanimous to the people that were present? So, it was carried unanimously?
No, it wasn't.
Miss Power?
I was absent.
In this case, we noted unanimously, as council passed a motion, including that the voting record would be included. There was no voters against, which would be the voting record. So, in this case, unanimously was used in place of saying everyone who was present.
Right, so, is there a seconder to this proposed amendment?
The amendment should read carried by those present.
Yep, so you understand you're moving that amendment? Is there a seconder?
Yes, I'm moving.
Seconded by Councillor Coates. So, given Miss Power's response, I'm going to rule that motion out of order.
Then I challenge the Chair.
Right, Miss Power, will you conduct the challenge, please?
So, in this instance, if you vote in favor, you're supporting the mayor. If you vote against, you would be supporting Councillor Richter, and I will start the vote. If you, I'm assuming, I believe your pads say yes, do they not? Do they say yes or no? I'm not sure. They say yes. Okay, so if you press yes, you're su-
Can you clarify which vote means what result, please?
If you vote the yes, you're supporting the Chair. The Chair has ruled her motion out of order. If you vote no, you're supporting Councillor Richter's belief that the motion is within order and should be voted upon.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And, let me do that again. There we go. So, the Chair was supported with Councillor Coates, Councillor Martins, and Councillor Richter opposed.
Is there any other proposal? Any other discussion or items on the agenda?
I'm not sure if it'd be a point of information or just a point. If I may, that the mayor does not do the minutes. The staff does the minutes, the mayor does not enforce what we do in, what they call our bylaws regarding procedure. Our clerk gave a ruling on that, unfortunate. She's a staff member, she did the best she can to interpret both Municipal Act and our particular policy regarding rules. I take exception to somebody challenging the staff and the mayor on something that we should know as policy and under the Municipal Act. Thank you.
Yeah, Councillor Richter, go ahead. What's your point of order?
My point of order is, I didn't challenge the staff, I challenged the mayor's decision.
Is that a point of order?
I am not challenging the staff.
That's not a point of order, Councillor Richter. You should make that point, that's fine, but it's not a point of order. I'm going to call the question on the agenda. That carries with Councillor Richter opposed. Get a motion to adopt the regular council meeting minutes November 3rd. Moved by Councillor Rint, seconded by Councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on the minutes from November 3rd? Seeing none, call the question. That carries, Councillor Richter opposed. Get a motion to adopt the public hearing meeting minutes of November 3rd. Moved by Councillor Rint, seconded by Councillor Bailey. Call the question on that. It's not the tennis court comparison we're calling, we're on B2.
So, should I say yes to the tennis court?
We're on, we're on B2. Miss Power, do you want to just start that over, then?
You should have it on your pad now. Did you see that?
It may say regular minutes, but we're on B2. Miss Power, will you please clarify?
Just a minute, I'm going to go down and...
We're on B2, even though the system is saying we're on B1.
I believe we're waiting for two people to vote, is this correct? Because I've got, what it's showing online is, it started the vote. Have you not, does it not show started on yours? Yep. I think I have it now.
That carries unanimously. Reports to council, E1, ten reports comparison, and I'll move the recommendation, seconded by Councillor Rint. Is there any discussion on E1? Councillor Richter?
Yes, I'm just wondering what the additional operating costs are going to be for carrying this out? Do we have any idea?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Richter, we don't anticipate any additional cost that would be delivered using existing staff resources.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question on E1. That carries unanimously. For item E2, Miss Power, I'm going to declare conflict of interest, and Councillor, Acting Mayor Ferguson will take over for this one.
Thank you. This reminds me a little bit of that song, "We Built This City on Rock and Roll." Anyway, the next item is number E2, Glover Road Pedestrian Plaza update. A motion? Moved by Councillor Pratt, seconded by Councillor Rint. Any discussion? Councillor Richter?
Yes, I note on page 1 that it says, "Overall feedback was limited and generally negative, and that council may direct staff to discontinue further work on a new pedestrian plaza." I'm just wondering, what was the negative feedback?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Richter, generally speaking, we had sent out 80, I believe, letters, and only received six responses to the letter. Therefore, there's a limited amount of feedback that staff have received. And generally speaking, the owners did request that the township not build a plaza fronting the businesses.
Okay, so they just want it moved? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Worship. Part of the report indicates that there was another business or two that were just down the road, that were outside of the scope of the proposed locations, and they indicated that they would actually like to see the plaza built in front of their businesses. I think the nature of the type of businesses is that, yes, for maybe a, somebody who's selling hats, having extra seats outside their storefront, doesn't make sense to take up a parking stall. But for a, you know, cafe, another establishment where it might increase business, it might make more sense. So, I'm going to support the recommendation to at least explore a conceptual plan and get the cost estimates for that. I know that there's concerns that some of the councillors might have around, you know, turning radii and such things. So, I'll be, I'll be curious to hear about the discussion. Thank you.
That wasn't a question? Okay.
Thank you. Just to clarify, there's two separate motions here, and I'm, are we voting on both in one? If I can, to the Chair?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Martins, my understanding is both the motions have been moved?
Okay, sorry, thank you. That wasn't clear to me, I apologize. So, the reason I'm wondering is, so the first motion is stating that the temporary plaza on Glover will be removed. And then, the second motion is for a design around the corner on Mavis Avenue, near Glover Road. I am assuming kind of a high-level design from staff. I really appreciated the staff report with all the various locations plotted out along Glover that were considered in this. I'm just not totally clear on the exact location that we're looking at on Mavis. And if I could ask through the Chair to staff for the, the distance approximately from the intersection at Glover and Mavis, that this pedestrian plaza would be right on the road?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Martins, it is in close proximity, just several meters away from the actual intersection of Glover Road and Mavis.
Sorry, how many meters was it?
Just within several meters, so we're just talking four or five meters.
Four or five meters, okay, thank you. I have a, I have some reservations about this. I know that we're looking to eventually relocate the North Langley truck route that would take the truck traffic from traveling straight through Glover and around the corner onto Mavis, heading towards River Road, and we're not there yet. That's a process, and that could be a number of years. But this plaza is going to be right on the roadway in very close proximity to a corner where there's a lot of trucks with, and I, and I believe another councillor mentioned it already, the turning radius of these trucks. And it can, I just think that it's a recipe for disaster that close to an intersection. But I will go along with this since they are lumped together, because I do support that the plaza needs to be removed based on the feedback from the community. And I look forward to seeing what staff come up with a concept and exactly how far that's going to be from the truck traffic. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Through the Chair to staff, I had a question around this seventh location. Originally, there were six locations that were identified after sending a letter through the 81 business owners. An email response came and identified sort of a seventh location. I'm wondering if the seventh location has had the same level of analysis done to it as the original six may have. And from the pictures that we've been given, it's, it's hard to understand exactly what this plaza would look like or where it would go on, on that, on the sidewalk or in behind the building. So, I guess my question to staff is around the analysis that's been done on the, this seventh location.
Dear Worship, to Councillor Whitmarsh, generally, the six locations were just, we looked at it at a high level, staff did. And as you have indicated, that the seventh location was just a suggestion made to locate the new plaza by the business owners, and specifically two business owners who are fronting this location that's in close proximity to the Glover Road and Mavis Avenue. And we would essentially look at, in the event council were to pass this motion, we would look at a conceptual design and look at more, do more of a feasibility analysis at that stage to determine any issues or strengths and weaknesses.
So, as a follow-up, would that conceptual design come back to council for discussion prior to implementation?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Whitmarsh, that is correct. We do a conceptual design and then bring it forward for council's consideration for funding request as well for a detailed design and construction estimate.
Okay, thank you.
I also have concerns about the turning radius of, especially B-trains coming through there. And it can't be unidirectional, it has to be both, because the two different directions are going to have different, like the drag of the second unit on a B-train will cut into the south side pretty hard. So, if you can make sure, yes, the same concern is not just the swing out, but also the drag of the second unit. Thank you. Yeah, just to make sure that's included in the report, please.
Yeah, through your worship to Councillor Ferguson, I mean, Councillor Bailey, that is duly noted. We understand that Mavis Avenue and Glover Road is a truck route. So, during the process of developing a conceptual design, in the event council does direct us to do that, we'd be taking that into consideration.
Discussion, I just wanted to say one thing. My point is that we'll be coming back to council for discussion, and we'll be able to review it again and look at it. And the next thing, I'll call the vote. Those in favor? Those opposed, if any? That's unanimous. Thank you. Someone get the mayor back, please?
At Chair, we have to redo the vote, it did not correctly register.
Okay, sorry. To start the vote again? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, very good. Can we get, can we get the mayor back, please? I'm not leaving.
Move on to E3, development permit application number 101501. Moved by Councillor Pratt, seconded by Councillor Bailey. Councillor Richter?
Yes, I note on page 4 that 16 significant trees are lost, and that this is an area of a red-coated stream. Page 17 then references a flex spear. What exactly is a flex spear? And is a flex spear permitted under current provincial environmental law?
Thank you, Worship, through to Councillor Richter. The Township's OCP, which contains our streamside setback items, includes at the outer five meters of such, above and beyond the provincial requirements, a flex provision, where on certain sites, as in the current circumstance, proponents, based on their qualified professional's input and staff review, can propose some flexibility in those last five meters of those setback areas. In this case, they're proposing a flexing 1,346 square feet and providing 1,765 square feet. So, they're providing more habitat area than would be previously required, but allows for the flexibility in site planning.
Okay, and are any of those significant trees being removed from this flex spear?
The trees that are, any trees that are within a area are, as per the development permit, are going to be protected by restrictive covenant. So, that will be reviewed at the detailed design stage with respect to the provision of that habitat area, keeping it intact. The practice based on qualified environmental professional input would only be hazardous trees would be, look to be removed as such within that area.
Okay. My last question is, have we obtained or will we obtain public input on this?
The, the, the quick answer is no.
Okay, why?
Dear Worship, to Councillor Richter, it's a development permit application, it's a development permit that's being brought forward. There's written correspondence available, and the event council approves a development permit, therefore, there is- In the event Council approves a development permit, therefore, there is no opportunity to either direct it for a public hearing or public input opportunity.
Okay, thank you.
Call the question on E3. Carries Counselor Richter opposed. E4, Agriculture Land Commission Application Number 100470. I'll move the recommendation, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on E4? Seeing none, call the question on E4. That carries unanimously. Ms. Bauer, Counselor Ferguson's declaring a conflict of interest on E5. I'll move item B, that Council advised that it objects. Is there a seconder to that? Seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on E5B? Seeing none, call the question on E5B. That carries with Counselor Bailey opposed. Yes, please. E6, Telecommunications Tower Application 0013. Also move that E6B, that Council objects, seconded by Counselor Ferguson. Is there any discussion on E6B? Counselor Martins?
Thank you. A question, if I can, through the Chair and staff. Is this one compliant with the township policy around cell towers?
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, no, it's not the, it is inconsistent with the Council's telecommunication tower policy, specifically with respect to the location preference and a few other items as well.
Okay. And along with our township's feedback, then forward to ISED Canada, I did have a concern raised by the Quandlin with regards to this application. Is it possible to flag that for, I don't know, for us or for them to, ISED to speak with Quandlin about this and add their concerns to the record? Or is there a way to go about that, if I can, through the Chair?
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, the policy itself states the public notice and consultation process. So there was notification sent to property owners, and that public consultation process had began with also newspaper ads being placed in Langley Advance Time. That would be the appropriate opportunity for any residents or the Quandlin First Nations to potentially make the objections. Here, Council's moving to not, to object to it. So we would just state that Council has objected to it and wouldn't provide any further information other than the report to Council, which I believe that that would be forwarded as well.
Okay, so they're best at this point to go directly to ISED Canada?
Dear worship to Counselor Martins, that is correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much.
So, if they're not following Council policy, and we're seeing a lot of these, are they all not following Council policy? And can they do it anyways? Can they actually decide where they're going to put these towers, even if we say that we don't agree?
Dear worship to Counselor, yes and no. So Council has a telecommunication tower policy. Some of the applications are compliant with the policy itself. There is a few applications that are not compliant with the policy, and we do highlight that to Council. The Council does provide its comments to the federal entity, that's the federal government, ISED Canada. That essentially, they're objecting to the proposed application, or they're either endorsing it. I think very rarely has any of the applications that Council has objected to has been overridden by the federal government and approved. So there is confidence in the fact of Council objecting to these applications that are either not compliant with the telecommunication tower policy.
So I just had one more question. Living in Brookswood, and you know, we all know how terrible cell service is there, are there any locations the township can guide ISED as to where we might get some success for putting some of these towers?
Dear worship to Counselor Kuntz, we do generally provide the criteria within the policy, and that essentially states, it provides a general framework for a lot of these telecommunication towers. It's industrial and mixed employment areas to avoid any other non-residential areas and residential, high residential areas, and also maximize any distance from potential residential areas. So there's general guidelines that we provide the proponents, but the proponents themselves do elect to proceed in some of the items, as before Council today, two applications are not compliant with the policy.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to call the question on E6B.
What's the answer? Yes or no?
Yes would be agreeing to object.
To object, that's correct.
Yeah, so that carries unanimously. So bylaws for first and second reading, 2025 Official Community Plan Update, bylaw number 6200. Moved by Counselor Rint, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Counselor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. But I just wanted to thank our staff, because obviously, this was a tremendous amount of work that was undertaken to get this update in front of us. Personally looking forward to the public feedback that we'll get once we go to the public hearing. It's been a long time coming, and obviously, there's been priorities that the township may have wanted to pursue that have maybe not been pursued on account of other levels of government. So thank you very much for all the work that's gone into it, and I look forward to what my colleagues have to say in the discussion today, as well as the public hearing in a couple of weeks.
Yes, I'm just wondering when the public hearing will be held?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, it will be at December 1st meeting.
December 1st, okay. I'm looking forward to the public hearing as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too also want to complete, thank the staff. It's a big binder we have, and it's a file on the computer as well. How many, if I may, through a chair, to Mr. Chu, how many open houses did you have? How much correspondence did you have regarding this particular plan? It was quite a bit, if I may, through a chair.
Through your worship to Counselor Ferguson, the last round of open house took place in September and October, and we had four in-person open houses and two virtual open houses, or information sessions.
And I think you got a lot of emails and other responses as well. I mean, I know the members of Council got information explained as well, if I may.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I want to thank you again. There's an awful lot going on. It's a big decision to make on a 2025 Official Community Plan Update, and it's a lot of work. Thank you, you and your staff.
Call the question on F1. That carries unanimously. Official Community Plan Update, Res zoning Application Number 100300, bylaw number 61426143. Moved by Counselor Pratt, seconded by Counselor Bailey. Counselor Richter.
Yes, through you to staff, please, Mr. Mayor. The public hearing will be held when? On December 1st as well?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, that is correct.
Thank you.
Call the question on F2. That carries unanimously. Bylaws for first, second, and third reading, Spirit Stage Mobile Bleachers, bylaw number 6179. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Pratt. Is there any discussion on G1? Seeing none, call the question on G1. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. G2, Fraser Valley Intermunicipal Business License bylaw amendment, bylaw number 61756176. Moved by Counselor Brent, seconded by Counselor Bailey. Is there any discussion on G2? Seeing none, call the question on G2. That carries unanimously. G3, Temporary Borrowing Bylaws, bylaw number 61776178. I'll move it, seconded by Counselor Rint. Counselor Richter, go ahead.
Yes, I'm just wondering what our total borrowing is now as a result of these temporary bylaws?
Dear worship to Counselor Richter, the borrowing, I believe, remains the same, but I'll have Ms. Ruff just confirm the total.
The total borrowing authorized by this Council is $526,743,765.
Okay. And my follow-up question to that is, does this number include any borrowing done as a result of the Langley Housing Trust Society?
It does not.
It does not. Okay. Do we know how much the Langley Housing Trust Society debt is?
I don't believe anything has been established yet for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, dear worship. Just a question through to staff. Just wondering about the culvert infrastructure loan authorization bylaw, and I guess the work to do on culverts. Is that, is that a capital cost, or is this more related to like culvert maintenance and updating and that sort of thing?
Dear worship to Counselor Whitmarsh, that was a capital item that was in relation to resolution for a culvert replacement. I believe that's my understanding. Just, I've missed, Ruff confirmed that as well.
That is correct. It's capital.
Okay. Just another question was, I noticed in the report, it talks about reducing some of these, like the culvert infrastructure loan authorization bylaw reduced by one and a half million, the Alder Grove Park area, the reduced by two and a half, and so on. And then that money, it adds up, there's a number of them, and it adds up, and then it moves into temporary borrowing. Could you just maybe explain just why, why we would reduce some areas of that, but then add it to temporary borrowing, and what the reason is that we do that?
Dear worship to Counselor Whitmarsh, so essentially, at the previous council meeting, Council had directed staff to reduce borrowing, specifically with respect to the culvert infrastructure loan, and then also the Alder Grove Park aid, and then also the strategic land loan authorization. So there's specific direction for reduction there. Secondly, the temporary borrowing bylaw essentially acts as a bridge from the period when the capital projects do start, and the funding is required until the actual official debt issuance by Metro Vancouver, just due to the process itself and the steps required. Temporary borrowing bylaws allows us to bridge that.
So this does cause then an overall reduction in borrowing, and the temporary borrowing bylaw just allows us to carry it until the project starts? Is that, but the overall debt is less, like according to this, 22 million?
Dear worship to Counselor Whitmarsh, the reduction was specifically by direction to Council, that we just borrow less? That's one item. And then temporary borrowing is a mechanism used to temporary borrow for the amount until we place, until we go into permanent, or potentially just pay the temporary borrowing off as well. So it just provides the mechanism to allow the projects to begin, and until we go to Metro Vancouver and the ministry as well, and go through the process to have permanent borrowing in place.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no discussion, call the question on G3. That carries, Counselor Richter opposed. Bylaws for consideration at third reading, fees and charges, bylaw amendment, bylaw number 6161. Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Rint. Is there any discussion on H1? Seeing none, call the question on H1. That carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Mayor and Council report. Does anybody wish to make a report?
Your worship, there's a J1.
J1. Oh, yes, there is. Counselor Richter, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Do I need a seconder for this motion to reconsider?
Yes, you would move reconsideration.
Okay, I'm moving reconsideration.
Is there a seconder to reconsideration? Seconded by Counselor Whitmarsh, so we'll call the question on reconsideration. That is defeated with Counselor Bailey, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Pratt, Counselor Rint, Mayor Woodford opposed. Now move on to Mayor and Council report. Does anybody wish to make a report? We're at K, Counselor Richter. No, J, K comes after J, Counselor Richter. Well, you can when we get there, but can we do the items ahead of it first? Would that be all right with you? All right, thank you. So carry on. Anybody wish to make a report? Counselor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. I just wanted to give a huge set of congratulations and compliments to the committee behind the Murrayville Remembrance Day Ceremony. Counselors Kuntz and Counselor Whitmarsh were there as well in attendance, and it was probably one of the best-attended Remembrance Day ceremonies that I can remember, period, besides Fort Langley. And it seemed to go off without a hitch on a beautiful day. So I'm sure all of the Remembrance Day ceremonies across the community were just as fantastic, but Murrayville was especially special this year. And congratulations, and I look forward to next year's.
No, I'm sorry, I must.
Yeah, I would like to echo that in regards to the Alder Grove Legion. Incredibly well, well done, and especially the fact that it was noticed by word and a few other ceremonies that they were jealous that we have tanks, and the act of participation from the armed forces in that very visible manner, and that they've, they did an incredible job as usual. Also, I'd like to say that the other day, I had the pleasure of, over at LEC, attending a, an impromptu kind of a celebration of nine young ladies who have achieved scholarships to the U.S. to play field lacrosse in their colleges and universities. And especially, three of the nine are from Langley, which goes a long way towards showing that the Langley minor lacrosse, in both male and female, is doing some incredible stuff. They've won provincial championships this year, and, and these young ladies have had two sons that achieved scholarships for U.S. colleges. These nine young ladies, I know, will represent B.C. and especially Langley very well.
Yes, thank you. Oh, yes. And I also repeat that many of us were at the services for November 11th, which were, the day was wonderful. People would come out. I think we had more people than others. I myself, the city, after that, we went to the Arboretum, where a special oak tree, I guess, was planted from one of the acorns from one of the wars, I think, that was brought back by former MP John Eldag. And, and our staff did an interpretation of that at the Arboretum. And then after that, I went off to the Alder Grove Legion, where I'm a member, and I'm showing my hat today. And the reason why I'm talking today, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that it's 80 years since World War II. And my father, who's in his late 90s, he, he served. So I'm wearing this today, and on this hat, it's not his hat, it is a, it was called, it's our label of the Ferguson clan, Dociet and Exponendius, which means strength through courage. And that's our, and I should say, my dad, he served over there, and I know, I said to former Mayor Sholton, I know Counselor Kuntz, that he actually served in Holland as well. His family did. that he actually served in Holland as well, his family did. And they weren't there for, I don't think, the liberation, but they did serve in Europe and in Holland and the Netherlands. So I wanted to say that today. It's a great, wonderful opportunity to be a member of the Alder Grove Legion. I've been a member for a number of years and there's thousands of people that came out to Langley on November 11th. It was very, very positive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the comments about Remembrance Day. I attended the Murrayville last ceremony and I remember going to the very first one there and I would have to say that every year it just keeps on getting better and more organized. But I wanted to highlight, and councillor Ferguson mentioned it, about the Vimy Ridge Memorial. And just encourage everyone to go check that out. Our staff have done such a great job at Derek Double Day. We've got a number of memorials there. And the one for Vimy Ridge, there's a small oak tree that got transplanted. It's now growing and they have actual, the ground kind of imitates what you would see maybe at Vimy Ridge with the rolling hills. And it was just, I was very impressed with how they did that. So kudos to our staff down at Derek Double Day.
For Metro? Yeah, so on the Water Committee for Metro, I have been raising for the last couple of meetings, the fact that there are not sufficient transmission lines. If you look at the map of transmission lines in the metro area, we only have one that touches, it pops out in Willoughby and then cuts up through Walnut Grove to service a very small area. This time I went into a lot more depth because this was looking out a hundred years. So I made the point that the vast majority of our jurisdiction does not get serviced by water mains. And when one of the staffers said, well, that is responsibility of the jurisdiction, I said, it's only the jurisdiction's responsibility when we have it available to us. And there are vast areas in the south and especially the east, including Alder Grove, that are not serviced by transmission lines from Metro. And it was very interesting, a number of the other members on that committee finally took notice of it and seen if we can, in the next hundred years, get a transmission line that will swing through very similar to what is in South Surrey because I remember when there was no transmission lines down there. And if you look at the map, you'll see a big loop down in the south. So there is a possibility of looping from just above Grandview, not Grandview Heights, industrial area down in the south to loop it through, down around the area of 24th Avenue, run up around 248th and then loop back up into the north. So good response. Hopefully Metro is now going to pay attention to us getting some significant piped water in the rest of the jurisdiction.
Yes, Metro as well. I wanted to say a quick, a couple of ones, Zero Waste Committee in Metro, which is basically garbage and recycling, I call it. And the township of Langley and our Alder Grove Place of recycling and waste, we are going to be making improvements and it's going to be up and running soon and sooner than later, I imagine. And we're going to be, I guess, in the same situation as maybe Surrey and Coquitlam where we are going to be modernizing and that's going to be very, very positive. And next thing is on Metro Committee Liquid Waste and Drainage. The Long Range Liquid Waste Plan is being presented. It's been presented to all members of the board and the committees and Indigenous nations and it's been, the response has been very positive. And my note today, as we read in the paper and we hear on the news and media, we're going to be seeing more and more rainfall over the course of the rest of the fall and the winter, is that we make sure our drainage, red days, we do not want higher, high water levels going into our sewage system because that clogs up the way it works. It's called a red letter day and it's very, very challenging. And my last point was, I wanted to piggyback on what councillor Kuntz had said. Our staff member was Neil McGarney from Parks Design and he did an explanation of the oak tree from Vimy. Thank you.
Councillor Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, worship. Just a quick update from the Metro Housing Committee. They are obviously undertaking another series of planning exercises, looking at forward over the next 10 years. And it's pretty exciting to see how successful Metro Vancouver is at delivering housing. I think my fellow committee mates are already a little frustrated with hearing me point out the fact that there is zero units of Metro Vancouver housing in the Langleys. And obviously Metro Vancouver does have most of their portfolio on account of the federal government's legacy sites from the 60s and 70s. That being said, there have been opportunities over the last, you know, number of years where Metro has done an EOI. And I hope that the next time that that does occur, township is at least exploring it. And I'm looking forward to, hopefully one day, being able to deliver some metro housing here in the township alongside our own housing.
Yeah, I'm going to go back a bit. I'm going to mention I was at the Fort Langley ceremony this year and again, very well executed. And I want to thank everyone who organized and was a part of making that happen and for all the ceremonies throughout our community. One thing that people may not know, which I thought was extra special this year, but also very small in a way, was our airport staff actually ensuring that there were no overhead airplanes over the Murrayville Ceremony at around 11:00 AM. And I really appreciate them doing that this year. Last year I noticed that and this year they took care of that and I think that'll become a regular thing, that the airport will respect that ceremony at Murrayville and make sure that it's clear that overhead aircraft or non-leisure craft, the ones that are overhead during Remembrance Day Ceremony are those honoring our veterans and our history. So with that, I'm going to move on. Councillor Richter, you said you wish to call?
Yes, I would like to ask councillor Whitmarsh. And it's very nice to see him here and I can't remember the last time I sat beside you, so this is kind of nice as well. Yeah. I just wanted to know through you to councillor Whitmarsh, if councillor Whitmarsh actually wanted to serve as acting mayor? Because he's been placed on the rotation to do so.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. It seems to me that, you and I, I didn't expect that I would be put onto the acting mayor rotation when, after the election. I understood that the position that I'm filling, that the councillor that left council to serve in the provincial legislature, that that rotation was covered by another councillor. And so it felt like to me that my opportunity to serve in that role was already taken and already served. And so it would be my, I don't have any need to serve as the acting mayor during this next 12 months. And it would make the most sense to me that that 12-month period was shared between the two councillors that had not yet served and that would be councillor Martins and councillor Ferguson.
Well, if that's the case, and thank you councillor Whitmarsh for sharing that, I'd like to make a motion that we remove councillor Whitmarsh from the acting mayor rotation and split the remaining acting mayor time equally between councillors Martins and Ferguson.
Going to suggest that you go ahead and file that as a notice of motion for December 1st?
No, I'd like to make the motion now.
Well, if you move it and it's seconded, I'll rule it out of order? So if you wish to file it for December 1st, that's?
Why would you rule it out of order?
Is this something that would typically be filed as a notice of motion?
There's a lot of things at this council table that could be filed as notices of motion, but aren't necessarily.
It's up to you how you wish to proceed?
Yeah, I'm going to make the motion.
Is there a second or to that?
I was seconded.
Well, seconded by councillor Whitmarsh, so I'll proceed to rule it out of order and request that you file that as a notice of motion.
Okay, and I'll challenge your decision.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Power.
Okay, so this weekend will be a challenge to the chair. So what you all do is, if you are supporting the chair, you will vote in favor. If you are, if you believe the chair is in error, you would vote against. And, just making sure this works. And you can vote now, please. In this case, it is a tie and that would be, the chair is supported.
There's no discussion?
No, I have a point of order. Why is a tie vote on this particular type of vote a victory? Whereas a tie vote on any other is a defeat?
This is the one of two instances where a tie vote is different. In this case, because the chair cannot vote, I believe that was the original way it was written, that it would support the chair.
Okay, so can a follow-up motion on this still be made to council?
The chair, if you wish to make a motion, you could leave it for other business? That would be more typical?
Well, or I could submit it before the deadline for notice of motion, correct?
Councillor Richter, I think you've been on council 30 years. You obviously know the answers to these questions. So if you wish to make a motion, you could do it under other business? If you wish to file a notice of motion? I know you're fully aware of the process to do that.
I haven't been on council for 30 years.
But you obviously know the process for making motions, right?
Well, the procedure bylaw change is frequently, it seems. I'm just verifying the procedure bylaw.
I'm not clear what you're asking, councillor.
I'm asking, now that you've ruled it out of order and you have been sustained, am I still permitted to make a notice of motion on this matter for a subsequent meeting?
If I received a notice of motion to put on the agenda, I would put it on the agenda. It would be up to the chair at the time if they considered the motion similar to one that was previously made.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good, so we're going to move on to items for information and 1 through 7. I have a few motions here to process, so I think we'll just move through those. Councillor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I don't have any motion. I just wanted to thank council and staff for the project that I feel is a long time coming, that I know user groups have been asking for, which is the wifi at the Derek Double Day Arboretum's Rotary Interpretive Centre. I know that'll be a great addition, especially for the Rotary Club that frequently meets out of there. And I think that'll actually make the space a whole lot more usable. So appreciate that.
Ms. Power, could you bring up the motion for N3, please? Yeah, so the council endorses completion of 209A Street Traffic Calming Measures and the upgrade of the conversion of temporary road narrowing at 84th and 209 to a permanent installation with pedestrian detection as soon as practical within 2026, with traffic calming funding to be finalized within the 2026 budget. I'll move that, seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on advancing N3? Seeing none, call a question on N3. That carries councillor Richter opposed. Ms. Power, can you bring up N4, please? Yeah, so this is, I think, just good to reiterate for staff that council endorses the staff recommendation of proceeding with option 1, with replacement and expansion of the Strawberry Hill Reservoir to be fully funded within the 2026 budget, seconded by councillor Brent. Is there any discussion on clarifying this and advancing N4? Seeing none, call a question on N4. That carries councillor Richter opposed. Ms. Power, if you could bring up N5. Yeah, the council endorses the staff recommendation of proceeding with conceptual roadway configuration options and high-level cost estimates to be undertaken and completed prior to the September 2026, 2027 school year. I'll move that, seconded by councillor Bailey. Is there any discussion on advancing N5? Seeing this completed by next summer. Seeing none, call a question on N5. That carries unanimously. Is there any other discussion on N1 through 7? Yeah, I just had a question, oh, we'll go to councillor Martins. Go ahead, councillor Martins.
Thank you. Just with regards to item N6, the winter maintenance preparedness, a question if I can through the chair to staff. I'm thinking of a, I believe it's actually a trail along the east side of 202 and Walnut Grove. I just wondered, first of all, if you can clarify if that's considered a sidewalk or a trail and if so, what the priority is for snow removal for that particular stretch?
Through your worship, we would need a little bit more detail of the exact location and then we would need to compare with our winter maintenance map. So I can't give you that information today, but we can look back at it.
Okay, and just for your information, if I can through the chair, more specifically, I'm referring to the stretch approximately 92 south to just past, I guess, the seniors, oh, to the keg, in fact. It's sort of a winding, I think it's part of the trail network. And I'm just wondering, because there are seniors living right nearby and I often see people struggling along that stretch. And I don't think it's totally close to transit other than local stops. It's probably too far away from Carvolf. There's a school a block in. But I just, that's one thing that shows up every year, I notice, and the people in the area have a bit of difficulty, particularly the seniors. So yeah, information would be great on that.
I have a complative question as well, Mr. Kunter, about N6. Council has asked for some policy revisions, consolidation, and mostly around staff accessibility to serving vulnerable populations. Still, if we can be able to get that before the commencement of the winter maintenance season, to confirm that those locations are priority 1?
Through your worship, the staff have begun the analysis of the various properties throughout the township that would meet the criteria. So we are aiming for a meeting in December, likely the second meeting.
So I think it'd be good to just say that, let's try to get that. And we've left it a little late advancing it to the council table, so appreciate any work you can do to have that in place for the December, January snow season, so appreciate that. Is there any other discussion before we move on to O1? No, so we'll move on to item O1, which was deferred. So Ms. Power, it's back on the floor, moved by councillor Kuntz, seconded by councillor Martins, is that correct? Yeah, is there any other discussion on this? I do have an amendment. Councillor Kuntz, go ahead.
Just having, when you go to a few dog parks, there's usually a separate area for smaller dogs. And I know this had come up and now that we're going to be opening this park, I believe in April, I think there is a bit of time to sort of see what the public, you know, I know that there were some comments made about still providing that space. So anyway, that was why I wanted to do a community survey.
So Ms. Power, if you could bring up my proposed amendment. I'm going to move this amendment, is there a second or to this amendment? Seconded by councillor Ferguson. And it just adds a little bit more specificity, that council directs staff to conduct public consultation to determine the preferred long-term configuration of off-leash dog park facilities with Old Yale Park, including multiple separated areas and other potential improvements. So that's the motion, just to amending, just to expand it and clarify the direction. Is there any other discussion on that amendment? Councillor Richter?
Yeah, is that amendment replacing the original motion?
Ms. Power?
I believe the amendment is written in such a way that the whole text is replacing words in the amendment or in the original motion.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any other discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, I'll call a question on the amendment to O1. That carries unanimously, now back to O1 as amended in the discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question on O1 as amended. That carries unanimously. Counselor Bailey, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to move P one. There we go. Yeah, I'd like to move this, because there's this section on the base out in Aldagrove that used to be housing for the members at that base. We now have a prime minister who is vastly expanding both resources and looking to recruit heavily for armed forces, and I think we, we should do what we can, and housing of, of military people right now is just as hard for them as it is for anyone else. That has been expressed by the federal government, and I went and met with eleven people from the armed forces of different areas out there to see if there was any interest. There is a very significant amount of interest, and also what this will do will foster what the base out in Aldagrove and in Chilliwack are both looking at doing is expanding their cooperation with the local jurisdictions. The major who is in charge of that base is also in charge of three other bases across Canada, and, and the other three, they have very significant operations to, to help the jurisdictions with some very specialized, trained individuals. One that they brought up is in water purification. So this is, is something that is very timely. There's money, there's will, and, and there's a possibility. This area is already serviced, as it was a housing area already. Water and sewer are capable of taking it, and if, and Mr. Chu, if I could get you to, do you have that diagram of the area I'm talking about at, at the Aldagrove base, please?
Certainly. I would have to ask Mr. Richardson to help me to go down to the bottom of the PowerPoint stack. It's the second last slide. It's actually slide eighty-six here.
So if you look on the, on the, the one on the left, that shows the housing that used to be there, and the one on the right shows that there are still roads going in there, and it would not be all that difficult to help out our armed forces, especially the, the new recruits and the members at 192, and also in Chilliwack, by cooperating with the federal government and the armed forces to ensure that the members who, who are putting their lives on the line and that kind of stuff will be adequately resourced, and they can have some very high-quality accessible housing.
Yeah, I have a question about the intent of this motion. And the reason I'm questioning it is because I'm wondering if we're going beyond our legal jurisdiction here. Is the motion intended to lobby to have this happen, or is the motion intended to make it happen?
This is to cooperate with the armed forces and the federal government, to assist in any way that the township can to help them do it, and this is not going to be a, a, a great cost, if any cost at all, and this is just simply to ensure that the armed forces and the federal government know that we want to cooperate with the men and women that are serving in our armed forces, and to ensure that we help out in any way we can in getting adequate housing with the large, large recruiting effort that is going on. They have very specifically said that they are concerned with the ability to house more members in the armed forces.
Yeah, okay. So if there's no cost, does this mean it's simply us sending a letter to the forces and the governments responsible for this, that we are in favor of it? Because that I can support. If it's about us getting Langley Housing Trust involved in building anything, then I think that's a step beyond what our jurisdiction probably is. So is this just about sending a letter of support?
Through the chair. No, this is, whenever I get involved in anything, it's not just send a letter. This has nothing to do with our housing trust. This is on every way, shape, and form, even if I have to go to Ottawa on my own tag to support this kind of initiative, not just sending a letter. I think that's, that's a rather shallow way of looking at helping our armed forces. This will involve, from my part anyways, and I'm hoping from council, that we do everything we can to advocate that we will support this, and again, very little cost. This would be a project that is run by the armed forces, and we've already spoken to the, the section within the armed forces that we're hoping will move us up the food chain, and I think advocating for more than a letter is definitely justified here.
Okay. So I'm, I'm still not clear. I'm sorry, I can't support this motion. If it's just advocacy, I can support it. If it's beyond advocacy, I'm not sure it's within our jurisdiction, so I can't support it, but that's all right. I'll vote the way I have to vote. Thank you.
Definitely appreciate your opinion. Counselor Pratt?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship, and I was really pleased to second this one, and I appreciate Counselor Bailey bringing it forward. I can attest to, you know, three years of parade nights, talking to people who otherwise would like to be in the regular forces and not just the reserves. One of the biggest concerns with going that route is that housing isn't necessarily adequate across all the bases in the country, and quite honestly, some of the bases are in parts of the country that not everybody wants to spend three years. So advocating in any way, shape, or form to keep people closer to home, to get housing built at an affordable rate, and bring more people to Aldagrove, to support downtown's revitalization on an ongoing basis, I think is something worth pursuing, and since it is just advocacy work, I'm more than pleased to support it.
Yeah, Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I think, yeah, thank you, Ms. Mar. I think the mover and secondary both know that this is federal land, that decisions on federal land are made by federal representatives. The interesting is that we, as a community, can always work with, whether it's federal, provincial, metro, indigenous nations, whatever, and if this is an opportunity, I think it's worth looking into. It's eleven hundred acres there, and I don't think they're looking for that much, but it also opens a door for what the, the federal government can do with their lands in the future. And I know, just briefly, Counselor Pratt mentioned metro housing. I mean, that would be a great opportunity down the road, I know it's not gonna happen overnight, if the federal government was to release some land to be used for any type of housing, whether it's the social housing, or, or housing regarding semi-services, personnel, families, et cetera. This, this is an opportunity to open the door, and I think that's what we do as counselors, we try to work with other level, other levels of government for positive results. Thank you.
Counselor Martins?
Thank you. And if I can through the chair to staff, can you put that slide back up on the screen? My questions are related to that. Thank you. So I appreciate the visuals. This wasn't in the council package, so I thank you to the mover for adding this. When I'm looking at this aerial, can you tell me what the boundaries are for the federal lands? Does it extend all the way down to thirty-five B there, or is it, anyways, if I could get some clarification on what I'm looking at?
Through your worship to Counselor Martins, the picture on the right-hand side shows the condition now. So if you look at thirty-five A Avenue, there is a row of single-family houses with some extended setback to the north of those houses. So the property line is roughly along that setback, the extended, extended setback.
Thank you. Okay. I was hoping that perhaps the homes I was looking at at the bottom of the image might be an upgrade, but they're not related. Do we know what happened to these buildings? Do we have any information on that, as to why they no longer exist?
Through your worship to Counselor Martins, I have no specific information on them, although we know that the buildings were demolished shortly after the aerial photo on the left-hand side was taken, and it was during a period when the federal government was trying to, I would say, sell off or demilitarize some of the bases around the country.
Okay, thank you. That, that's really helpful context to all of this that I'm looking at, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, generally, the, the concept of this I'm very supportive of. I think this is a great initiative. I just did have a couple of questions, and maybe one is adding to the question that was asked by Counselor Richter. I don't fully understand and know what, what lobbying means from the, from the municipality. Certainly, we talked about a letter, and, and we've indicated that there's gonna be much more than that. I'd like to guess to know what, what those things are, that we do as a municipality to lobby for this kind of thing, beyond a letter, what that actually looks like. And then the second question I have around it is, it does mention in the, in the therefore that we'd be working towards cooperating with organizations that will help lobby. I'm wondering who these other organizations are that we will be working with, and I don't know if that can be answered by the mover, or if that's a question to staff, I'm not sure.
Just based on some very preliminary discussions, we're aware of multiple arms of different levels of government trying to deliver housing. So for example, the Minister of Housing, Gregor Robinson, has indicated some interest in providing housing for all sorts of people, and this, this may be one of the areas that he may be interested in providing some support. So essentially, two federal ministers would work together, Minister of Defense, National Defense, and Minister of Housing, for example, and also the provincial government may be interested in partaking in, in this type of discussion through BC Housing.
Okay. Yeah, that's very helpful. So we're talking more about different levels of government than we are talking about working with other organizations. I guess that's, I'm just trying to clarify. Maybe the mover can help to share that.
Definitely. Already had a discussion with some members of the Legion in Aldagrove, and they are very interested in seeing where this is going, because through these talks immediately, they have specialized units within the armed forces that they worry about their skills degrading, and some of these are dealing with many aspects of construction. So I would look at, have already looked at dealing with lobbying other members. I, I spoke to the Minister of Housing, federal Minister of Housing quickly, and I was given a, a contact to do with that, but the Legion is one that, that I very specifically am targeting here. Again, it's in Aldagrove and has a very close connection, and is in the immediate proximity.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, I'll call a question on P one. That carries. Counselor Richter opposed. Is there any other business? Counselor Richter?
Yes, through you to staff, Mr. Mayor, if I can. I'd just like to ask the clerk again, if I put a notice of motion forward today, it's the same one, or it would likely be the same one, as was defeated in the challenge to the chair. Does that preclude another member of council putting forward a similar notice of motion before the deadline for the next meeting, which is December first?
As I understand, what occurred was you proposed to put a motion forward, and the mayor ruled it out of order, and you challenged him on that. So the original motion was actually never put forward. So you could put it forward, or another member of council could put it forward, as we did not deliberate on that motion, we deliberated on the challenge to the chair.
Okay. If that's the case, then I would like to submit my notice, a notice of motion for the December first meeting now, that basically reads the same as the previous motion, which was to remove Counselor Whitmarsh from the acting mayor rotation and split the remaining acting mayor rotation time equally between councilors Ferguson and Martins.
Thank you.
That's the notice of motion.
Thank you. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Yes, I wonder if staff can help me out here. Last meeting, we had a motion dealing with Christmas in Williams Park. That's it. I, I wonder, I'd like to put a, a motion forward on that one, please? Yes, to, in that motion, we remove the ability to tap for donations. I'd like to just remove that, that mention and make sure that the tap option that worked so well last year is included in the ability to raise funds for the food bank. Yeah, it's, it's, it worked extremely well. You know, we had over fifty, I believe it was fifty-five thousand dollars went to the food bank last year, and a big part of that, and especially when it comes to security of, of money and donation, the tap option is, is a wonderful way for people to be able to donate, and you don't have to worry about security of monies. So I think the removal of, of the option for people to donate by tap is, is not very productive, and I'd like to make sure that it is included, since it will also speed up the progression of the vehicles going through.
Is there any other discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question on P two. Nope, we're on P two. The motion moved by Counselor.
If you'll give me a moment, I'll add it. I just didn't have a chance to add it.
You're voting on P two, Counselor Martins.
Oh, sorry, I thought the clerk said she, the clerk.
So you're voting on P two. What is there to speak about? You're voting on P two, like, it's not a complicated issue. Go ahead, Counselor Martins.
I was just waiting on the clerk. I thought she said she didn't have a chance to enter it, so I was waiting for her to do so. That was all. I was trying to respect the clerk's wish.
But we'll do it again, Counselor. We'll do it again. Ms. Bauer, label it correctly. These labels continue to be a challenge.
The challenge is if I try and add it when someone's speaking, then it shuts the microphone.
No, I understand, but members of council are doing what they're doing, so we'll just call the question again. P two. Great, that carries unanimously. Is there any other business? Get a motion to, does anybody wish to add any items to close? Counselor Richter?
I wish to withdraw item F one.
Ms. Power, I think we covered that when we adopted the agenda.
Yes, I understand, we dealt with that during the adoption of the agenda.
Okay, it's a notice of motion. I'm withdrawing it. All right, I guess I can, thank you.
So anybody wish to add any items to closed? Nope, seeing none, get a motion to resolve into special close, moved by Councilor Rint, seconded by Councilor Bailey, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? And that's, that carries, Councilor Richter opposed, get a motion to terminate, moved by Councilor Pratt, seconded by Councilor Rint, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.